It is four o'clock and this workshop session of the Carroll City Council is in order and called to order. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic and emergency situation we're all dealing with, we are thankful that we have a way for the public to remain engaged and participate in open public council meetings in various ways. Citizen or public participation is available by calling in, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox before 3:45 PM. All of these instructions are provided online and in the agenda. Any questions that citizens and visitors might have may not be responded to until after public comments have concluded if a member of council raises the question. We ask for your patience regarding any difficulties that might arise as we move with this new format on a temporary basis. Unless we see a real spike in the COVID cases, we will open to the public for these meetings in September. Any public comments?
No, sir. No one has signed up.
At this time, I am going to call on the city manager after Ms. McElhanan reads in this item.
President's Executive Order on Safe Policing for Safe Communities and Local Law Enforcement Compliance.
All right.
So, Mayor and Council, as a result of some of the recent unrest that we've had with regard to death of some human beings, with regard to police brutality, and you know, the whole Black Lives Matters protests and so forth, and just the overall civil unrest, the president issued some executive orders related to what communities need to be doing for safe policing in safe communities. Now, a lot of what's been promulgated in this executive order has not been actually interpreted, so to speak, by the Attorney General, so a lot of it's pending. But I think the good news that you'll hear from the chief is that we're way ahead of the game in terms of doing what we should be doing, which is, I think, a testament to the department and what they've been doing all of these years. So I'm going to ask the chief to go over, just to briefly summarize, what is in the executive order, and then how we have already responded to it or already doing what the president is calling for. And so Chief Knight, would you go ahead and please proceed?
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you on this very important topic. As the city manager talked about, the executive order really addresses several different areas that do with improving accountability, increasing transparency for departments, for law enforcement departments, investing more resources in police training, recruiting, and community engagement, as well as attempting to move forward and improve the relationship between law enforcement agencies and the communities that they serve. This is, really, we're looking to do this by implementing best practices and protecting the communities that we serve through that process. So I provided you with this information in advance. I know that you all probably poured over it. It's not going to take that long to really go over it. Like, as the city manager had mentioned, there are some things that we can identify in this executive order that the police departments, including ours across the nation, can look at and move forward with the implementation component of this. And then there are some things that are still up to the interpretation of the Attorney General and some of the other individuals that were tasked in this executive order to complete some analysis, and we'll go over those briefly as well. But basically, this is broken down into several different areas on the executive order side. One is certification and credentialing, and I will tell you, that is the lion's share area of where we already have moved forward with actions and taskings to accommodate some of the things that are talked about in credentialing and certification. The information sharing process also, there are some things that we have done there. But again, this is going to require some input from the Attorney General's office to actually set up some of the processes that are going to be required to implement it. Mental health and homelessness and addiction issues, and legislation in grant programs. And what we will find is that in the executive order, it actually ties the ability of law enforcement agencies to access grant funding to compliance with the executive order. And that was something that was really anticipated. So on the credentialing and certification side of the House, it tasks the Attorney General to, first off, right off the bat, to allocate Department of Justice discretionary funding only to agencies that have sought or in the process of seeking appropriate credentials from a reputable independent body. Now, that's to be certified through the Attorney General. What it doesn't stipulate, and what the Attorney General is going to have to determine, is what is an appropriate credentialing or certification body. And there are many, there are national standards that apply to law enforcement agencies across the United States. Kalia is one of them that is utilized by many of the major departments in the United States. The other are credentialing and certification and processes that are actually developed in turn to the states. As an example, we use the Texas Police Chiefs Association Recognition Program. We'll get into detail about that very shortly. And we're anticipating that that is going to be a recognized and certified credentialing authority. So how is the Attorney General looking to do this, and what are the things that they're looking for? Well, right off the bat, they identify policies and training regarding use of force and de-escalation techniques, early warning systems that help to identify officers that may have issues that put them at risk for behavior that needs to be intervened by the departments, and best practices regarding community engagement. So they stipulate in this that the law enforcement agency's use of force policies adhere to all applicable federal, state, and local laws, and also that these use of force policies prohibit the use of chokeholds in particular. So the Attorney General has to engage in looking at credentialing authorities and identifying those that meet his standards for this component of the process to continue on. So in regards to all of this, where do we sit at locally? What is the Carroll Police Department doing? Well, we engage in the accreditation program through the Texas Police Chiefs Association, which many of you, you're already aware of accreditation programs for schools and universities and hospitals, where these programs are programs of professional excellence, and they require independent proof of compliance with a set of rigorous standards. The Texas Best Practices Program that we participate in is an accreditation program. It's based on 168 best practices and challenging standards within law enforcement, and addresses a full range of law enforcement operations such as use of force and protection of citizen rights, vehicle pursuits, property and evidence management, and patrol and investigation operations, just to name a few. There are 2,400 law enforcement agencies in Texas. 160, more or less, are actually certified and accredited through the Texas Police Chiefs Association. So that gives you an idea of the numbers of agencies out there that may not be involved in a certification process at this time. But the good news is there are 160 agencies that are, and the Carroll Police Department has been a longtime participant in that accreditation process. So that is good news in regards to this. So 168 best business practices, and it's anticipated by the Texas Police Chiefs Association that participating certified agencies in the recognition program will satisfy that executive order direction that the police agency is being certified. It's our understanding that the recognition program does meet these criteria. Again, we're still sort of on the edge of the bubble, waiting for the Attorney General's office to actually make that certification. So some of the things that we do in regards to what we've already talked about in the certification and credentialing process, and the things that they're specifically looking for, we have an annual documented training on use of force, response to resistance, and control measures. Those are all conducted. So we do training on those specific areas annually. Crisis intervention training and de-escalation training is mandated for officers in Texas. As an example, de-escalation training is a training process that our officers have to go through every two years if they're at the basic level, and then they have to have that training as well for an intermediate certification or an advanced certification. So that is training that is introduced through the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Education.
Go ahead and advance your slide.
Thank you. I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, so that's mandated. The department incorporates some performance management tools through annual reporting and analysis of use of force. We do these because it's part of the best practices for the Texas Police Chiefs Association, and that's what we do. So we do annual reporting and analysis of use of force, vehicle pursuits, accidents, and sustained reviews of audio and video systems, whether they're onboard the cars or body camera systems. We do that through our first-line supervision system, where those sergeants review those videos. They do five vehicle-mounted and five body-camera-mounted for each officer every month. And we use those, quite frankly, as a mentoring and training tool more than anything else. But secondarily to that, we are pretty diligent about going through and looking at those because that's an early warning system. If we identify repetitive behavior on the part of officers that is in contradiction to the standards that we are looking to have our agency ascribe to, then that's an early warning system, and we already have those in place. Our use of force policy abides by and is in compliance with all of the current federal, state, and local laws. And again, that use of force policy is part of the entire policy process that we have to go through to make sure that we are in compliance with the 168 best practices that are identified. Also, our policy does contain provisions identifying unauthorized use of force, which prohibits the use of chokeholds, or carotid artery neck restraints, or vascular neck restraints, as it used to be described many years ago. So we have that prohibition currently in our policy. And this is only, the only exception to that is if you are in a situation as an officer where you are justified in using deadly force. So if you have a situation where you're wrestling around on the ground for your life, and a situation arises where you are justified in using deadly force, subject gets your weapon, something along those lines, then we don't constrain the officers from using this type of technique because they are, at that point, fighting for their lives. But that's the only exception to it, not for any other type of control measure that's utilized, or something along those lines. This also includes requirements for reporting incidents for our use of force reporting system. So right now, we have a reporting system for every use of force that occurs within the police department. What we anticipate happening is, because there will be requirements for reporting these types of use of force specifically, then our reporting system will need to be expanded. The system is in place, it's just a matter of expanding what we currently do. It also includes provisions for officers' duty to intervene by verbal or physical means and to immediately report unjustified or excessive use of force. So again, if we have a situation that occurs out in the field where we have either an officer, regardless of rank, that exhibits excessive use of force, or utilizes one of these techniques, there is a duty to intervene by the officer. Not only intervene and stop the action, but they are also required to report that as Under the information sharing component to the executive order, this really is tasking the Attorney General to create a database that documents and shares information nationally concerning incidents of excessive use of force related to law enforcement matters. It also, the database also includes a mechanism to track terminations or decertifications of law enforcement officers for criminal convictions of law enforcement, officers for on-duty conduct, and civil judgments against law enforcement officers for improper use of force that specifies that. As far as this database is concerned, it's not in existence at this point in time. This is really referring to creating a national database because it applies to the entire nation. However, again, there are some components to this that are already in place that we have to abide by. Every time an officer leaves service from a law enforcement agency, then we have to report on what's called an F5 report to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, what the circumstances were of that officer's departure from the agency. And it ranges from, you know, an honorable discharge to a dishonorable discharge, and the reasons for why that officer separated. However, what it does not currently do is it does not currently track the specificity of why that officer was under investigation. And we can foresee that that's going to be something that is sort of injected into that, some specificity as to why. That's really, I think, going to be a key component to providing this information so that it does go to the database.
Chief, when that happens, will it be retroactive? In other words, will it go back through all of your officer's records, or do you know? And bring everything forward, or will it be from the day that it starts?
I believe it's going to be from the day of the executive order, and would not be retroactive. I don't see how we can make it retroactive. It would be extremely difficult to go back and capture that data and then re-enter it. And in many circumstances, that data is probably not in existence, or not retrievable, depending on how old it is. So I would anticipate it would be during, from the time of the actual executive order. It should also account for instances where the officer resigns or retires while under investigation specifically for use of force. And also takes into account that these officers were afforded a fair process as this information was developed. It also talks about aggregating and reporting this regularly to the public. They're talking about aggregating information and anonymizing it, and that's not a process that we would be involved in. We would provide the data, and of course, on the national side, they would have to come up with a process for anonymizing it and aggregating it for release. It also, again, ties this component, the law enforcement agency providing information into this national database, as a mechanism to allocate Department of Justice discretionary grant funding. So again, dollars are tied to this as a component of it. Here we go. Okay, so in terms of what we currently do for that, in compliance with TEACOL standards, we report officers separating from service by category, as we already discussed, but not a specific reason for the conduct. And we anticipate that an expansion of this requirement for reporting will encompass those database requirements. And the current required report format indicates that, and tracks, yeah, instances where law enforcement officers resign or retire while under active investigation, but again, does not specify what that investigation is for. So I anticipate that that will be an expansion of that as well. Under the mental health and homelessness and addiction side, again, there are many things, there are several things in this executive order that are still up in the air. The Attorney General, in conjunction with some of the other sub-directors, like the Secretary of Health and Human Services, all have to weigh into this to let us know exactly what it is that we're supposed to be doing. But the general gist of this particular subcategory is that law enforcement officers are involved in quality-of-life issues that revolve around mental health issues and homelessness and addiction issues, those quality-of-life issues that are probably not best served for the public and the law enforcement agencies to handle on their own. And we've sort of come into that circumstance over the past several years. Certainly over the last decade, we've seen more and more law enforcement agencies having to deal with these types of issues. And so the push is really to develop co-responder programs, or what we locally are working towards and have been working towards over the past 18 months or so. We started this process last year before the changes to our operating procedure, where we started looking at a multidisciplinary approach in partnership with the mental health and development services arena, so that we were not, the law enforcement agencies were not the only ones that were dealing with this issue, and that we had employed more of a multidisciplinary approach, where we were looking at response teams that contained law enforcement as a security component, a mental health worker or a social worker to deal with the mental health side, a medical side that would deal with the medical issues that can arise, and the issues with medications, and whether or not those are being, that medication strategy is being adhered to. So we were looking at that type of approach in a multidisciplinary team. We have not moved forward with that, but this is exactly what this really is dealing with. Co-responder programs that involve social workers and other mental health professionals working in conjunction with law enforcement officers. So we were already within the Kerr County area, not just the Carroll Police Department, but Ingram Police Department, the Kerr County Sheriff's Office. We are all dealing with this issue, and we had identified it last year, and we are already taking steps, and we're working towards this concept. So the good news is that we're familiar with it. We have a good idea of where we're going with it, and so we should be able to move forward with that.
In that regard, Chief, are they volunteers, or are they paid for their time out of your budget, or how does that?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, so none of it's been worked out?
So it's almost, you know, you could read this as an unfunded mandate, but as a component of the executive order, it does talk about recommendations on appropriate funding and how things can be, funds can be reallocated to support widespread adoption of these types of programs. So they're thinking about it, but we don't know yet.
Well, I know they were working on that last year with the county and the state hospital, because I went to one of their meetings, and there was a grant that they were going to, it was like a really tight deadline to get that grant in, but it was going to pay for the van that they were going to use, and for four representatives, a nurse, psychiatrist, maybe the guy from state hospital. Anyway, I was just wondering, is this kind of what you remember from last year that was started?
Yes, it's absolutely right.
Because I was a homelessness part of it, that was my interest.
Right, and I was involved in those meetings, and you're absolutely right. We were really targeting grant funding opportunities because otherwise, we were talking about creating a system that would be totally supported by, you know, volunteer efforts from the various agencies involved. So that's the direction we were moving in.
Good, maybe we'll get there.
So also, the state, the Secretary of Health and Human Services was tasked in this to conduct a survey on community support models addressing mental health, homelessness, and addiction, and then within 90 days of the order, summarizing the results of that survey. Well, those 90 days are up September 13th, so don't have any results of that yet, but we'll be interested to see where that goes to, and I think that's going to be a driver for policy in the future. So legislative and grant programs as well, really focused on retaining high-performing officers, confidential access for law enforcement officers to mental health services, and improving relations between law enforcement and communities they serve. So this is all about tying these specific performance metrics into the grant process, the ability to seek and obtain grants. So specifically, looking at training and technical assistance that would be required by agencies to implement improved use of force policies, or work through scenario-driven de-escalation training techniques, things that we already do. But we certainly would want to avail ourselves of any opportunity to expand on those training classes and to make sure that we're doing the things that we should be doing. And those things are all outlined in here, and they're also outlined in our participation in the certification and accreditation process. That's really it, the last, or general provisions in regards to the president's executive order on safe policing and safe communities. And, you know, really, it's just, this is telling you that they're going to look at the funding process. We don't know what's going to be legislatively approved for funding in regards to this, in that it doesn't create any type of right or benefit for any substantial procedural process. And that was it.
Chief, thank you very much. I want to make a few comments. Having talked with you before about what the department is doing, and I shared that information widely with the public, I just want to say I continue to appreciate the continuing training that goes on within the department. It's significant and important. Your emphasis on respecting everybody that the officer encounters, whatever their situation, outside assessment, like with the Texas Police Chiefs Organization, to come in and look at you at those 168 different areas, I think that is very important. One thing that isn't reflected in this, really can't be, Thursday night, a truck going into a house in our neighborhood, eight-year-old little girl severely injured, and I've thought about the emotional cost to the officers and to the fire department, EMS. We don't have to go into that. We don't have to go into that, but I think that's something for the public to be aware of and...
Well, we can go into it a little bit. I know that we don't have a lot of time, but that's, that's a very important component of how law enforcement officers deal with the things that they see every day. You know, of course, the family has to live with that, that particular circumstance for the remainder of their lives. They will relive that over and over again. The officers that were there, on the other hand, will relive the, the small component that they saw. But that's going to be aggregated by all of the other critical incidents that they respond to. And they all see small slices of things that they will carry with them. So, it's, you know, it's anomalous, it's, it's analogous to, it's like a death from a thousand paper cuts. You're, you're, you're looking at situations that occurred in your career over and over and over again, and it's the aggregate of those. And sometimes when you have a, a very traumatic experience, like we were discussing here, those are the things that officers really need a lot of help with. And I can tell you that we have officers that are internally trained on crisis intervention for officers, a peer support component. And we have those officers that responded there. We have put them through that peer support process, initiated it. They have done so individually and they've done so as a, as a group because officers respond in teams when they go to many calls, including this one. So, they were involved in that. We also involve pretty heavily the, the DPS Crisis Intervention Team for the region. We have a very good working relationship with them. And, and also have a meeting this, later on this week with a, with a very good friend of mine who is a veteran from this agency, from the Kerrville Police Department, who also participates on that, that crisis response team. And, and he and his wife both teach a component at the Law Enforcement Management Institute in Huntsville. And he is now retired and back in the area. So, that, that, that outreach and that coordination took place before the tragic incidents that occurred on last Thursday night. So, it was very fortuitous. But you're right, your, your observations are spot on. And those are situations that we really need to take care of, the resilience of our officers out there.
Counselor?
I just wanted to comment, I, there was one word I liked in this very much. They used the word common sense and I like the tone of this. I just, I, I feel like it's positive and I, I was very pleased with that. And so, I'm, I think you guys would be looking forward to putting some of this in place and it'll be interesting to see as it comes down. Any idea of a, of a timeframe with it?
I don't have a specific timeframe, other than what I could piece together from, from within the executive order, which really boils down to the Secretary of Health and Human Services requirement to do their survey and to report those by the thirteenth of September. So, beyond that, I, I think we're sort of in a holding pattern to see what more we get and what guidance we get out of this. And I, I don't think it's going to be a long and drawn-out process, but I couldn't put any specific timeframe.
And I just appreciate all that you guys do for us, so, thank you.
I, I have a quick question. So, what we have resource-wise right now, when we recruit new officers, do we have the ability to know what their possible history is in another state before we go forward with their employment?
We, we do have that capability and we, and we, we're pretty diligent on doing that through our background investigation process. So, regardless of where the officer is from, we require quite a bit of information from them in order to conduct a very thorough and stringent background investigation process. One of our investigators does that. And we make it a point to reach out and physically go to agents. As an example, in Texas, if we have an officer that is here and has worked in another agency, we make it a point to go to that agency and speak with them directly about what kind of officer we're, we're talking about. Of course, there, nationally, it can be difficult to do that. But we can make that outreach either by telephone or organization to organization. And we have done that with officers that we have recruited from outside of Texas.
I think that's important.
It, it is absolutely important.
Thank you.
And to expand, to expand on that, just, I was able to speak with you and I appreciate that. Appreciate everything you guys have done. I just found it really interesting. One of the questions I asked was, you know, my sense of the police department here and the relationship with citizens is, is very good. And what do you attribute that to? And I know one of the many things that you talked about was hiring. And I was very impressed with all of the things you told me about the hiring process. So, if you want to share a little bit of that. And the other one I wanted, wanted you to share, if you would, was, we talked about the percentage of use of force in, in arrests and how, how low that was. And I was very pleased by that too. So, I thought, since we had a few minutes, if you would tell all of us a little bit more about those two things.
Sure, I'll, I'll go in, in reverse a little bit. As, as we talked about, you know, we already track use of force incidents within the agency. And what we find is that as far as a use of force or a response to resistance that requires some type of control technique on the, on the part of the officer, that's less than one percent of all arrests are actually reflected in that. So, that's a, that's a very good percentage. When you look at the numbers of arrests that are, that are made in an area and the numbers of those use of force incidents that occur that require tracking. And, you know, we're talking about everything from the use of pepper spray to the use of personal hands and feed personal weapons or an escalation to impact weapons or all the way up to chain. So, I, that's a, that, I think that speaks volumes when we look at the, the repetitive annual analysis of use of force that, that we go through every year and, and that it, it tracks in that fashion year in and year out. In regards to the hiring process and the recruitment of officers, we've found, you know, when you look at the numbers of officers that we have hired into the agency over, over the past several years and you look at that data-wise, generally, we handle nine different, nine applications and from different individuals to get one officer onboard. It's, it can be a laborious process, but it is a process that we absolutely must do well. Because it, 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 it does not guarantee that you won't get an officer who truly does not adhere to your core values and what your agency should be doing. But it certainly goes a long way to ensuring that you have officers that are reflective of what your core values are and they're supportive of what your, your department mission is and they buy into that. So, one in nine for that. We, it's a lengthy process. From the time when you actually get an application, it's, if you look at two different types of officers, one being the non-certified individual that applies for work as a police officer and the certified individual who has worked for another agency or has already graduated from the academy. When you look at those two, we will hire a non-certified individual, but, you know, they go through the same background process of, as a certified police officer. And we put them into the academy. We, we contract with them. We, we pay them to go to the academy. So, if we look at that situation, from the time you get an application, the time you get through the background process, the time to get through the academy, which is six months, and then follow on to that, another six weeks minimum of field training in our FTO program, you're looking at about a year from the time you reach out to the time you have an officer on the street who's, who is, is now ready to, to move forward on a, on a shift. That's, that's a lot of investment for not only the city, but for the organization to make. And we want to make sure that we get the right people to do that. On the certified side, you know, that, that timeframe is compressed because, you know, you don't have to put them through the academy, that's six months, but they still have to complete your field training officer program. And that, and sometimes when you, when you look at that, from the time it takes, from the first time you get the application to getting boots on the ground, you're, you're talking about, you know, five to six months in some circumstances. But it is a lengthy process. You, you've got the, the, the initial application and background. You've got the, the, the physical assessment that goes into play. You've got a background interview that goes on within the department. Then you've got a, a basic battery of, of skills tests that, that assess whether or not this individual is proficient at report writing or mathematical equations. And, you know, we wouldn't think that, you know, police officers have to, to be mathematicians, but we do when you start looking at accident reconstruction and those kinds of things. One of my lieutenants refers to it as math magicians, but it, so it assesses those, those basic skill sets. And so, there's that component to it. And then, we have to send them for a polygraph and we have to put them through a, a, a mental evaluation, a, a component that we use a police psychiatrist to do that complete evaluation on them as a component of the overall process. And so, that's quite a bit of things that you've got to go through in order to actually make it into the world of policing. And I think some, sometimes people don't understand that because it wasn't like that twenty-five years ago.
Chief, several months ago, when so much was happening across the country, I visited with several African-American leaders here. And I said, what is your perception of Kerrville Police Department? And are African-Americans treated with respect by the police? And they all said yes. And I think the other thing related to that, the, you know, contact and arrests that you have with African-Americans is not out of proportion to their demographic, their size. But anyway, I, I really, really appreciate, and that, that reflects your emphasis on respect for everyone that the officer deals with. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, chief.
All you're doing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Since this is for information purposes only, no action is required. And I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session under sections 55.071, 551.072, and 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. I hear such a motion.
I move that we go into, go into executive session under all those numbers that you just ran.
Yeah, all right, and I've got a second. All in favor, if you'd let me know by the raised hand? Okay, all right. At four forty-five, we're going to recess into executive session.